Good evening and welcome to City Council Meeting for November 24, 2020. This meeting is being conducted in accordance with directives from Governor Sisalak, which limit in-person attendance. Public comment will be available via phone call. Also, it was posted in the agenda, methods such as email and voicemail that can be used to offer public comment. Those will be read and made part of the record. We have a technical issue. Again, welcome to City Council Meeting for November 24, 2020. This meeting is being conducted in accordance with directives from Governor Sisalak, which limit in-person attendance. Public comment will be made available at the appropriate time via phone call. As posted in the agenda, there have also been methods for people to either email or leave voicemails for public comment. At this time, I will go ahead and call the meeting to order, and we will begin with the administration of oath for Officer Ryan Espiritu.
Welcome, Ryan. If you could please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Ryan Espiritu.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution and the government of the United States.
And the Constitution and government of the State of Nevada.
And the Constitution and the government of the State of Nevada.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Whether domestic or foreign.
Whether domestic or foreign.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
Allegiance and loyalty to the same.
Allegiance and loyalty to the same.
Any ordinance, resolution, or law.
No ordinance, resolution, or law.
Of any state notwithstanding.
Of any state notwithstanding.
And that I will perform well and faithfully.
That I will perform well and faithfully.
All the duties of police officer.
All the duties of police officer.
Of Boulder City, Nevada.
Of Boulder City, Nevada.
On which I am about to enter.
Of which I am about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
Officer Espiritu, again, welcome to Boulder City. I know that Chief Shea will be making sure that everything goes well in your employment. Unfortunately, we're in the time of COVID. Normally, we would hope to have your family or friends here to enjoy this moment as well. But again, welcome to Boulder City's Police Department.
Well, thank you so much. I look forward to serving the community.
Thank you. And now we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And do we have any public announcements?
I do.
Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, thank you. I wasn't sure how to frame this. It was a very exciting thing that happened this evening, and I felt it was very important to announce it at some point of the evening, and it appeared this was the best. I received at 4:00, I'm sorry, at 6:28, I'm going to crack, 6:28 this evening, an email message from Jessica Stetson at the Little Lambs Program. United Way of Southern Nevada reimburses money for costs of distance learning. She submitted $27,000 in receipts for rent and payroll. She just got emailed back, and it's been approved. And she's very excited about that. We, I spent some time on the phone today with United Way with Denise Tanata, and a lot of people have been very concerned about this issue because there's a critical demand for assistance for children who are going through needing distance education and parents who work. So I thought this was very exciting news considering their dire situation right now. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Unfortunately, we will also be discussing that further. Councilmember Folda has an item on the agenda that addresses that very issue, so thank you for that. Any other public announcements, Madam City Clerk? Thank you. We will begin then with our first public comment period. Public comment during this period is limited to five minutes per speaker and is limited to items that appear on the agenda. Anyone wishing to call in at this time?
Public comment?
Yes, I have public comment.
Go ahead.
Yes, good evening, Council. For the record, Fred Volz. After reviewing Agenda Item 7's proposed CAFR report, a number of comments about its contents follow. At several points in the written narratives, the Finance Director's external auditors state they can offer no opinions about the adequacy or inadequacy of internal financial controls, despite the fact that in the area of utility capital projects, it has been almost 15 months since the issue of a multimillion-dollar discrepancy in fully reconciling all project spending and unused fund locations, past and present, surfaced. Neither the Finance Director nor her external auditor have chosen to discuss those lingering problems in their CAFR narratives. NRS 354.624, Paragraph 8, requires an external auditor to report any fraud or dishonesty in financial statements to local government management. Given the wildly fluctuating spreadsheet numbers for both utility capital projects and unrestricted utility cash, it is surprising there still has been no movement toward improving the accuracy of reported numbers and spot checking individual project spending. Reworking of internal controls is an obvious step that one can reasonably expect from a comprehensive external audit. Three written narrative comments deserve your attention as well. First, on page 99 of the support packet, total expenses for governmental activities indicate an increase of $4,610,934, or 13%. The justification offered says, quote, "This increase can be attributed to the normal fluctuation in day-to-day operational costs," unquote. 13% is a significant variance that deserves a detailed explanation for such a large discrepancy, as it infers that financial controls on spending are extremely loose. Second, and also on page 99, business-type activities reflect a $2,701,499 increase, or 11%. The justification offered here, quote, "The increase can be attributed to increases in salaries, wages, and employee benefits compared to the prior year." Yet on page 147 of the packet, the assumption used for pension calculations says there will be a 5% growth in payroll. So why is the compensation increase year-to-year more than double the 5% in business-type activities? Third, on page 100, under proprietary funds utilities, a $12.7 million increase in net position is reported as due to slight increases in operating revenues. If the $12.7 million is divided by 16,000 city residents, that equals almost $794 per person for the year. That is not a slight increase when rates were frozen at the midway point of fiscal year 2020. A better, more accurate explanation is warranted here. On page 158, $599,353 of salaries and wages show for a category called legislative. The only legislative function within the city is this city council. Its minimal salaries are a small fraction of $600,000. An explanation of what other salaries have been placed in this category and why they wouldn't belong in one of the other categories would be appreciated. Finally, the almost $1 million fiscal year 2020 operating loss at the airport on page 185 is concerning. This poor financial performance excludes the substantial capital project monies still required to perform extensive deferred maintenance and make improvements that might only be partially funded by the FAA. Tonight's CAFR indicates the city, through the Airport Advisory Committee, needs to explore the possibility of complete disposition of the airport if the airport continues to draw down general fund revenues despite its official enterprise fund status, so that city taxpayers are not subsidizing the recreational activities of a very small segment of the population. And I would ask that these comments be added verbatim to the record. Thank you.
Thank you. The phone line is now available. Anyone wishing to call in? Again, anyone wishing to make public comment during the first public comment period? Madam City Clerk, do we have any emails or voicemails submitted?
None.
None? Thank you. All right, hearing no others for public comment, we will close the initial public comment period. And we will move then to the approval of the agendas. Approval of the regular agenda. Any changes, Madam City Clerk?
No changes.
Mr. City Manager?
No changes.
Thank you. And Madam City Attorney?
No changes.
Thank you. Bring it back to Council. Any changes for the regular agenda?
No changes.
Councilmember Hoskins is calling into the meeting this evening. Did you have any changes?
No changes, sir.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for approval of the regular agenda then?
I move to approve the regular agenda.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous approval. We'll move to the consent agenda. Again, Madam City Clerk?
No changes.
Mr. City Manager?
No changes.
And Madam City Attorney?
No changes.
Bring it back to Council. Any changes for the consent agenda?
No changes.
Mayor, I would like to move item number two from the consent agenda onto the regular
Councilmember Hoskins, any changes for the consent agenda?
No, sir.
Councilmember Adams, would you like to make a motion then?
I move to approve the consent agenda with the change of moving the item number two to the regular agenda.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
One second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's also unanimous. We'll move then to consideration of item number two. I'm guessing we will, oh, there he is. Mr. Luttrell, our Public Works Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Keegan Luttrell for the record, Public Works Director. Item number two is Resolution 7183. It's an agreement with Clark County to provide funding for the bighorn sheep habitat that's going to be out just north of the Hemman Way Park. The county is providing $175,000 to construct this park. It's going to include walking paths out around the park and possibly a watering hole for the bighorn sheep. We've still got to do some coordination with the Nevada Department of Wildlife to be able to put that in. They're allowing us to plum all the piping for it, but we've got to come to an agreement with them because we want to make sure we're not drawing more sheep into the area and overpopulating it. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. I asked to have this placed on the regular agenda just because I know how important the bighorn population is to a number in our community, especially those who live around there. So as you mentioned in my briefings, I had questions about whether or not we had consulted with wildlife experts or not, and so we did, in fact, have those conversations. Could you elaborate a little bit on what was discussed and what issues they had?
Yeah, as I was saying, is they were concerned with co-mingling different sheep and drawing more sheep down to the park. They see if we put the watering hole in, or initially, they're thinking if we put the watering hole in, it'll draw a lot more to the area. So if we do get approval to bid this project out, we will construct the watering hole, but we just won't put any water in it for now.
Gotcha. And I think some people might be asking, how can providing water to those in the desert wildlife? But it really is about balancing the ecosystems so that no one population is allowed to grow beyond its means, which then pushes it out into areas where it might be less healthy for them.
Yep.
So like you said, so we would be potentially moving towards building this and constructing the area, but until we can really get it cleared with those experts who best know what is in the best interest of the bighorn population, that that is how the city will move forward.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I just, again, I wanted to make sure that we had the conversation because I know, especially if people start seeing work going on down at that park as it relates to the bighorn, people are going to be interested. So I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Luttrell.
You're welcome. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Hoskins?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess just to follow up on that, you know, I know our Parks and Rec Director, Mr. Hall, has said before about, you know, people calling Parks and Rec and saying, when do you let the sheep out? You know, these are wild animals. I think people need to always keep that in mind. I can think of a video clip I saw a couple months ago, the big motorcycle event in Sturgis. Somebody thought that they would get real close to a buffalo. And that buffalo didn't seem to mind, but there was another one that apparently took exception to that. And I guess we just always need to be aware that those are large animals. Some of them are protective in nature, and it's best to observe them at a distance. They don't need to be fed. They figured that out on their own. So again, I think this trail system, it looks very nice. That's what this money is intended for from sale of land. So again, I hope the project works well, and members of the public, keep it in mind that they are wild animals. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Would you like to make a motion, Mr. Adams?
Certainly. I move to approve Resolution Number 7183.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Luttrell.
You're welcome.
We'll move now to item number four, Presentation of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Finance Director, Ms. Pelletier.
Good evening. Diane Pelletier, Boulder City Finance Director. For tonight, you have before you a presentation and acceptance of the fiscal year 2020 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, known as the CAFR, and audit by Hinton Burdick CPA and Advisors. Nevada Revised Statute, NRS 354.624, requires the city of Boulder City to submit a complete set of financial statements prepared in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States within six months of the close of the fiscal year. These statements are required to have an annual audit performed by an independent audit firm. We will be filing the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report to the state this week to meet the November 30 deadline. In addition, we will be submitting the city's CAFR to the Government Finance Officers Association for consideration of renewal of the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. The city's financial statements have been audited by the independent audit firm of Hinton Burdick. Once again, the city of Boulder City has been given an unmodified opinion. This is the best opinion a city can receive. So Chad Atkinson, CPA and partner from Hinton Burdick, is here this evening and has a brief presentation and some comments to share with the council, and then we'll answer any questions you may have. So I'll turn it over to Chad.
Thank you.
Thank you, members of the council and mayor. It's nice to be here tonight to give the fiscal year 2020 audit presentation. If it's okay, I'll take my mask off. Is that all right, so I don't have to choke on it? Okay. All right, so let's go to my first slide here. There we go. I wanted to say thank you to the city staff, first of all, for assisting in the audit process. As you know, this has been a unique year with COVID-19 going on. I've made the comment in other presentations that I guess accountants are naturally gifted at social distancing, and so the audit was able to roll forward. So we're glad that that can happen. We're happy to be able to present the CAFR for another on-time delivery to the state of Nevada. So we appreciate that. We want to say thank you to Diane and to Rebecca and to others that have assisted in that process. All right, so I'm going to do my reports first. We have just three reports this evening to go over. The independent auditor's report is on page 13 in your Comprehensive Financial, Annual Financial Report. We issued an unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements, as Diane explained to you. That's the highest level of assurance that you can have. Another report that we issue is on report, a report on internal controls over financial reporting and on compliance. It's on page 135. And we're required to obtain an understanding of the controls and to also perform walkthroughs on those controls, which we've done. And we're happy to report that there are no material or significant deficiencies that need to be reported to the council. So we're happy about that. We also wanted to report that in the area of compliance with laws and regulations, grant agreements, et cetera, we did not become aware of any material issues that needed to be explained in that as well. So there's no findings on that report. On page 137, we do a report that's a little bit more narrow focus on the compliance with laws and regulations in the state of Nevada. There was one budgetary compliance issue, which we have listed in the CAFR on page 43. The aviation fund exceeded its budget by $39,397, and so we've detailed that there as required and wanted to bring that to your attention. As we talked to management about why that maybe occurred, and we've concluded that there were some pension adjustments at the end of the year that took place. Each year, your pension plan is valued by an actuary, and that actuary provides a report usually after the fiscal year is over with, and then we do adjustments based on that actuary report. So the budget that was allotted there for that adjustment wasn't quite high enough. So that's why the fund went over on that particular item. So do you have any questions about that?
Councilmember Adams?
I guess to the point, is there anything that the city can do to help try to ensure that something like that doesn't happen again?
Yeah, I think you would have to. These actuarial reports are fairly new. I want to say that this is probably the third or fourth year, and they've been going up and down significantly because they are affected by rates of return, the market, conditions going on. And so it is a little bit difficult to know, but I guess you could call ahead of time. The same people usually do the actuarial report. You could get an idea of what those adjustments might be and then forecast that into your Great question.
Councilmember Folda?
Thank you. I just had one question on that. Over the last fiscal year, we added an airport manager to that. Did that affect that number at all, having that additional employee in that budget, possibly?
Yes. I don't have, I guess we could go into your budgets and look at your budget, but yes, if you added some additional costs there, that could also contribute. The one that I focused in on was the benefit line item. That was the particular line item that went over, and that was the major contributing factor, was the pension adjustment. So everything else seemed to be factored into the budget.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Hoskins, did you have any questions on that specific item?
Not on that specific item. I'll address some other issues later.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go to some financial highlights. Let's see here. Maybe. I don't know where my slides went. Let's see. Okay. So what I wanted to do is have you open up your CAFR if you wanted to look at page 29 first. By the nature of this presentation, we're at a very high level, right? I'm just giving you some flyby highlights from your CAFR. Obviously, if you have questions about specific details, we can drill down into the details, probably not in a public not in a public meeting, but would be a better situation to maybe sit down and go through the details with the Finance Director. So, on Page 29, this is your, kind of your operations, your, your statement of operations for all of the different governmental funds for the year. And I want to give you just a chance to look at your general fund, Capital Improvement Fund. If you haven't had a chance already to look at this page, I'm just going to make some general comments here. The, the change in fund balance for all of the governmental funds for the year was $7.1 million. That's compared with $7.3 last year, so down just a little bit. Revenues were up $8.3 million from, from the previous year, and that was primarily in the intergovernmental revenue area. You had significant funding that came from the Regional Transportation Commission related to some projects going on within the city. And most of that, that funding was used for the Boulder City Parkway Project. So, that tended to increase the numbers overall in, in the city's revenues and expenditures. And that was the major thing going on this year there. But overall, fund balances are up in all funds, so positive results. Do you have any questions on this statement before I go to the proprietary funds? Okay.
Councilmember Hoskins?
As I said, I'll, I'll go over all of my questions when he finishes, if that's okay.
Okay.
Thank you. I, I do just have a question. You know, I, I realize that these figures are as of June 30th, so we're looking back a few months. You know, the prediction had been, when the pandemic first really took hold, that we were going to see some significant declines in revenue. Did you see any impact? I mean, you just mentioned that we're actually adding funds, that we've seen increases. Anything that you saw as impact then during the tail end of the last fiscal year?
I've talked about that with some colleagues, and I've also noticed that I, I believe the last few months of the year, I, I'm just going off of memory, but I believe the consolidated tax was obviously down because that comes from the state. And with everything being shut down, you're going to see an immediate impact. But as we looked at projections with, with this gentleman, we, we saw that, that the state of Nevada is continually putting out projections. So, if you want to get a handle on, you know, is that going to really dive on you or not, they have projections on their website that you can get, get your hands on. So,
All right.
That's a good thing to look at.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to turn to Page 32 and just take a quick look at the proprietary funds. This is your utility fund, an aviation fund, and your cemetery fund. And I'll just give you a minute to look at that. The results were good in the utility fund, $12.7 million and change in net position. And in the aviation fund, it was a loss or change in, a negative change in net position of $591,000, and the cemetery was up $96,000. Operating revenues were up, generally speaking, by $552,000 overall in all of these funds. Operating expenses were up $3.1 million, and primarily in the area of wages, employee benefits, and services, and supplies. And I'm just giving you the broad categories. Obviously, you could go and take these and, and open up and see which accounts flow into those categories, but you'd have to do that in the office, right? And open up the general ledger and look that over. So, that's broadly speaking what, what the changes were. There was also a transfer in for $3.4 million. If you look at the utility fund, that transfer in came from the Capital Improvement Fund. So, that also added to the results of the utility fund. I wanted to mention two other things that I thought were, were great, were positive things. Note 20, there's two prior period adjustments. And in previous audits, the, we, in discussion with management, management had, had thought that they needed to look into receivables a little bit more and also into capital assets. So, they did some extra reconciling during 2020, and they found some, some things that were happening between the general ledger and the subsidiary ledgers that needed some reconciling. So, they, so they came up with these prior period adjustments for capital assets and also accounts receivable to get those more accurate with what they should be. So, that was something that went on in, in 2020. Also, in Note 21, the bond refunding, I think you probably, I, I don't know if the bankers come here and explain these to you, you know, extensively, but you, you refunded a bond this year at a lower interest rate, and that created a significant economic gain for the city of $4.1 million. So, that was a very positive move that's, that was done by the city. Any questions there?
No.
All right. That's in Note 21. It's on Page 70, so.
I, I guess the, it's an ongoing concern that I have when we look at a breakdown like this, because this is just addressing revenues. Is that correct? We're not talking about assets here. We're just talking about revenues on this particular breakdown?
Are you talking about Page 32?
Yes.
Oh, it has revenues and expenditures on there. So, you got your operating revenues at the top, operating expenses in the middle, and then your non-operating revenues and expenses, which are classified a little differently. So, it, it does deal with, with both.
Okay. You know, again, this is something that has continued for quite a while. Depreciation expense being listed as an operating expense. We don't pay that money to anyone, do we?
What happens is you pay it in the beginning, right? So, you have an asset that you, that you purchase, either with, you either buy it with debt or you, you actually pay for it. And so, then instead of expensing it all in the first year, then you would spread that expense out over the length of the asset. So,
And I do understand that, but that's a charge against asset value rather than against revenue, wouldn't it be?
Yes.
And yet, we continually show it as an operating expense, as though it's reducing revenues.
Yes, that's correct. That's standard generally accepted accounting principles there, so.
Where does the money go, though?
Where does the money go?
Yes. If we're showing, for instance, under the utility fund, the depreciation expense that is there is nearly $3 million. So, where does that $3 million go? Because it's showing it as a charge against revenues, not against assets, although it may be shown against assets elsewhere. But on this particular breakdown, it's showing it as a decrease in revenue.
Yes, it's a decrease in your assets, right, and a decrease in revenues, or it's offsetting your, your revenues.
But where does the money go? I mean, it, it doesn't really go anywhere, does it?
It doesn't go anywhere, yeah. It's a non-cash transaction. So, that money that's an expense is a non-cash transaction, and that money's retained within the city. So, yes.
But it shows it as a deduction or a debit to the cash position.
It does. The cash flow statement maybe is what you want to turn to. The cash flow statement on the next page, Page 33.
Well, again, I don't doubt that we need to account for depreciation within the assets, but when, on this particular breakdown, this is talking about revenues and expenses rather than against assets. And on the flip side of that, as we do capital projects or maintenance or repairs, that's appreciation that's occurring, and yet that doesn't get reflected. We just continually show that we're depreciating and never increasing anything, although we are doing that. So, to me, it seems like a, a dichotomy there that in one case, we're willing to take out, you know, millions of dollars, but when we put millions of dollars in, we don't show that. And really, in both cases, it's not money that goes anywhere. It's against the value of assets, not against the revenues.
Yeah. And I can show you, as I get into the net position explanation, I will show you how, when you purchase an asset, how that increases your, your asset value and your net position within the fund. So,
But I, I guess if we're going to, what I'm getting at is we're, if we're going to show depreciation as an expense against revenues, why wouldn't we show appreciation as a plus against revenues? And quite honestly, since we're talking about revenues, I, I don't see how we actually have a cash charge for something that's an asset value.
You're right, yes. Yeah, the, the measurement focus here is an accrual basis statement. And we could go into that, but that would require a little bit of, you know, discussion on what that is and how that works in the accounting world.
Well, I, I, perhaps after, you know, another year. I mean, I've been asking the same question for three years, but, and this doesn't go to you. It's a general question for the Finance Director, but we see it each year, and it's like, okay, where's that $3 million go? It goes nowhere, and yet it's shown as a charge against revenue.
Yeah, if you're focused on the cash flows of the, of the fund, you could definitely take the depreciation out. We know that's non-cash. If you're just looking at, you know, how much cash do I have, and how much is it going to cost me this year, and what are my operating revenues? You can definitely look at it that way. But for financial reporting, according to the standards, it's going to be in there unless somebody can change the standards for me.
Okay.
All right. Okay, I was going to turn to, where am I? I'm on some financial highlights in the funds. So, I'm going to go to the Boulder, just before I begin this, I wanted to remind you that you have assets and you have liabilities, and if you subtract your liabilities from your assets, then you have fund balance left over. And as the mayor's pointed out, it is a little easier to see in the governmental funds because they tend to be a little bit more cash basis. They don't have depreciation going on in the governmental funds, so they're a little bit easier to see. The proprietary funds, they're a little more complicated because they have a different measurement focus. So, but the general fund highlights for this year, I wanted to just point out that your unassigned fund balance, which is, has gone up $1 million from $21.6 million to $22.7 million on that little cheap, little teeny chart up there. That, that represents approximately 9.2 months of operating reserves that the city has on hand in the unassigned. So, that's, that's a positive thing. The, kind of the minimum that you want to have there is two mi, two months, but you have well above that. So, that's, that's good. Committed fund balance, you've got $1.6 million. It was $2 million in the previous year, and it's down to $1.6. And that's because part of this reserve, emergency reserve, was moved to a different fund. So, it hasn't gone anywhere. It's just been moved to a different fund, $400,000 of it, and I'll show you that in a different slide. And then you've got $232,410, which is your non-spendable fund balance. This is money that's already been spent on inventories and prepaid. So, this is kind of the, the resources on hand at a point in time at June 30th, 2020. So, positive results. Any questions there? Okay. We'll go to the Capital Improvement Capital Improvement Fund balance is up from $9.9 million to $11.6 million. It's up $1.7 million overall. And these are restricted, set aside for specific projects. So, five-year trend looks great. The Boulder City Special Projects Fund, as far as resources go, in Fiscal Year 16 and 17, as you can see on the slide, this fund was, was used primarily for things that had expenses and revenues that offset each other, so they didn't have, it wasn't accumulating a fund balance. But from Fiscal Year 18, it began to accumulate a fund balance for capital projects, and that went from $1.8 million to $3.7 million in the restricted. And then the committed fund balance, which I mentioned previously, from Fiscal Year 19 to '20 went up to $400,000. That's the other half of that $2 million that got moved to this fund. And I believe that was by just council action that, that did that. So. Okay, then your utility funds. I'm not going to completely answer your question, Mayor, but I'll, I'll at least point out where the capital asset additions come in.
Thank you.
You've got your net investment in capital assets, which is your top, top number there. This is just all of the system and structure and infrastructure that's used to, to care for the, to care for the services that are provided. So, you've got $37.3 million last year, and it's $41.8 million this year. The reason for the increase there are the capital asset additions that took place. So, there were $6.5 million in additions there. And then another $1.5 million, this, this number is also affected by debt payments related to those capital assets. So, when you pay down debt, it actually increases your, your number there. So, you paid $1.5 million in debt payments, and there was depreciation of $4 million. So, that's how you get, that's, that's essentially showing your equity increasing there by all the capital asset additions that you did. The middle number, the unrestricted net position, the $32.1 million up to $39.9 million, that is up $7.8 million, and that's approximately 19.5 months of operating reserves. So, that's, that's a significant reserve. Again, if you have to use some of that reserve for capital assets or system repairs or things like that, that can be depleted quickly, right? But it all depends on the projections and things like that that you have for your capital improvements and system requirements and updates and things that you have to do. So, you have to take that into account as you set rates and other things. All right. And then bottom line, you got $2.3 million and $2.3 million, no changes there. This was part of the net position that's set aside for debt service, and it's been, it was kept consistent in Fiscal Year 20. So, no changes there. Overall, northeast trend on these graphs. So, we like to see those northeast trends. Next fund is the aviation fund. Okay, the aviation fund had a little bit of a loss, like we mentioned earlier. The net, net investment in capital asset is your top line number there, $21.4 million down to $20.4 million. That's mostly depreciation on the assets. You didn't have really any additions in this fund, just depreciation. So, that's why you, you got a decline there. And then the bottom number, $1.1 million to $1.4 million, that's $315,000. That's your unrestricted net position. Any questions on aviation?
No.
Okay, final slide on your cash balances. And I'm sorry, I think I got the, the numbers are flipped on, on the top there, but I'll, I'll read them to you. So, the governmental funds, the cash went up $4.2 million from $41.7 million to $45.9 million. And the business type cash is up $9.8 million. So, that's $37.2 to $45.0, excuse me, $47.0, $47 million. So, so cash is increasing in the funds. And that's, that's the end of my presentation. And it sounds like we've got some other questions we need to answer.
Yeah, I, again, thank you, Mr. Atkinson. And I know there was a audit committee meeting scheduled for earlier today. Councilmember Foley, you chaired that committee. Did you want to speak to that meeting?
So, yeah, thank you, Mayor. We did have an audit review committee meeting scheduled for three o'clock earlier this afternoon. This is a four-member committee. One of our members was already out of town for the Thanksgiving break, and earlier this morning, a second member wasn't able to make the meeting. And so, because of lack of quorum, we had to cancel the meeting for the audit review. So, we did not hold a meeting this afternoon.
Thank you. And I, I do find that regrettable. I mean, it, you know, things do happen, but it's the second year in a row that, for whatever reason, the committee has not been able to meet to review this prior to review by the city council. I, I think we need to do something about that. Last year, it was the Finance Director. Last year, it was the finance director. This year, it was members being unable to attend. Somehow build something in there that there will be sufficient time to do that. Or perhaps we need to increase the membership on the committee by a member or two.
Yes, Mayor, I've spoken with the city clerk earlier today, and so that will probably be an agenda item coming up in January.
Thank you. Councilmember Hoskins, you're also a member of that committee. Is there anything you would like to speak to that you didn't have an opportunity to at the meeting?
Yes, sir. For the record, I would like to read some of the questions that I asked of the finance director and her responses and make a couple of remarks. That's all right. Starting with page 15, the question I ask is, "A single audit is referred to and not required this year. Could you explain why it's not required?" Her answer is, "The city of Boulder City did not meet the $750,000 threshold requirement for a single audit." The next, this is a comment. "I discovered an error on page 17 of the report under government-wide financial analysis. There is a typographical error that changes the dollar amount in the following sentence. At the close of the most recent fiscal year, the city's net position was 22,862,388. It should read 229,862,388, or a difference of 207 million. Typos may not be important in a narrative, but they are crucial in a financial audit. As you can see on the same page and all pages thereafter, the figures are correct. I would suggest that the book that's provided this evening be changed by writing in the correct amount instead of adding a loose new page that could be misplaced."
They've already been replaced.
Okay. And the next question is, "The city manager's report on June 30th, 2020 does not match the auditor's report to the same time. The summary of investments and cash do not match the H&amp;B Audit Report on page 25 of the report, 87,453,667 versus 92,832,740 in the manager's report. The utility fund, 16,848,041 versus 15,218,533, and the cemetery fund and the aviation fund figures are different." The city manager's answer is that the report does not include accruals for all the numbers that I referenced in my question. The CAFER includes all information on June 30th, including receivables, payables, year-end adjustments with the CM report, that the CM report doesn't. And the next question I had for her was, "Does the software we are using track the purchase order through the payment to the vendor?" And the answer is yes. And I ask, "What software we are using currently?" And the answer is Munis Financial Software. So the question I had for the auditor was, "If you have any suggestions that could help to ensure the accounting and tracking is made easier or more transparent for our finance department?"
I don't know if Diane wants to come up and answer that. She just made me aware. We don't use it, but I guess you have a way to drill down from the internet into Socrata? Do you want to talk about that?
Sure. I think last year, in November, December, I made a promise to the council that we would have transparency software up and running by January 1st. I think the mayor promised me something if I did it. Anyway, on January 1st, that's.
No, I just kept asking for it, but thank you.
It was done. It was provided on January 1st, ready for usage. And I believe, I think some council members have used it to drill down. It has, it's a checkbook format, and it's updated, I believe, every day for whatever transactions that we do. And we're also actually looking at additional features on that Socrata that will allow us to create reports. So maybe if we can meet with Mr. Volz and answer his questions, maybe we can, you know, provided the questions can be answered for him, we can create reports maybe that would answer him on a regular basis. But we have to try to meet with Mr. Volz because these questions keep, you know, being mentioned every meeting. And our information is done in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We have to follow a template when we create our reports. We can't say, "We're going to change it and put, you know, different..." We can't change the template that they give us that we have to use. But we can certainly create other reports outside of that for citizens and council to answer their questions. So we're hoping that Mr. Volz will meet with us. I did get a listing of his comments. They weren't the ones he made tonight, but I did get a listing of comments about three days ago. So we've been looking at that. And anytime he wants to meet with us, we'll answer his questions and provide it to the council.
Councilmember Hoskins?
Well, I think that's a good idea, that we're trying to resolve this issue. And so I think the finance director for that to offer, and I'm sure Mr. Volz will be taking her up on that offer. And thank you both for answering my questions.
Any other questions or comments from council? All right. Did you have additional information or?
I don't have additional information.
Well, I appreciate the presentation.
And I, yeah, if you have follow-up questions, I think I've left my contact information on the last slide. So if you want to reach out to me, I can answer a lot of questions too. But as Diane said, I think the best source is to go dig into the details. I think the city has a desire to be transparent, so.
And I do believe too, you're in the third year of a five-year contract. Is that correct?
The years run by, but yes, I believe that's correct, yes.
That's my recollection as well.
Yes, I believe that's true.
All right, thank you, Mr. Atkinson. And thank you, Mrs. Pelletier. And so I guess we need a motion for acceptance of the CAFER.
May I move that the city council accepts the 2020 CAFER?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously then. We will move to item number five now. This is a public hearing on bill number 1890, adoption of the International Fire Code via ordinance 1890. And we have Chief Gray.
All right, good evening, Mayor and council. Like you said, this is a public hearing and a possible action for the council to consider bill number 1890, which would be adopting the 2018 Fire Code and the 2018 Southern Nevada Consensus Fire Code amendments. It would replace the 2017 Boulder City Fire Code, which is actually based on the 2012 International Fire Code. So we're hoping to clean that up. I wanted to just point a couple of highlights and answer some questions from yesterday. The first thing, and one of the most beneficial things is, by adopting the 2018 Fire Code, it will align with the recently adopted 2018 Building Code and Plumbing Code. The codes are designed to go together. We discovered between the time that the building code was adopted and today, there's been times with some of the construction contracts where they conflict. And when they conflict, we have to resort back to the most stringent code, which in this case tended to be the 2012 code. And it was causing some confusion because we're the only jurisdiction that still has to pass this. So some of our contractors from the valley were confused because it just wasn't consistent. So this would clean that up. Another big thing that I think is beneficial to the residents is it clears up some things in terms of sprinkler systems with a residential. Under the 2012 Fire Code, and this will continue under the 2018, if you build a brand-new house that exceeds 5,000 square feet, you have to sprinkle it. Under the 2012 Code, if you built a 4,800-square-foot house, and then two years later, you wanted to add 1,000 square feet, it would bring the total over 5,000. You'd have to go back and sprinkle the whole thing, which was quite expensive. Under the 2018 Code, if you build a house like that, as long as whatever you're adding itself isn't more than 5,000, you don't have to go back and put the sprinklers in. So if you had a 4,800-square-foot house and you wanted to add 6,000, then you would have to go back and sprinkle it because you really don't have a house anymore. You now have, you know, a commercial property. So. And then one thing I'd like to clear up on the sprinklers system. So there was, we're not sure how it started, but there was some concern in the community. Community development received several phone calls. The fire department received phone calls. I was asked, when I was out in public, there was a rumor going around that this code was going to require all of the residents in Boulder City to put sprinkler systems in their house. And that's nothing further from the truth. Under NRS, if we ever wanted to require residential sprinkler systems, it would be for new homes. And there's a very long process to go through. And we've not went through that process, so obviously, we wouldn't be able to sneak that in. So that was never an intention. So we're not sure where that came from, but we want to assure people that this has nothing to do with that. A couple other changes. Prior to this 2018 addition, energy systems, solar panel and battery storage was scattered throughout the code. And so what they did is they created chapter 12, and it just brought everything from throughout the code into one place. So the main advantage of that is obviously convenience for anybody who wants to install it. They did add a couple of changes to it. So one is the roof placement of the solar panels. I had a solar system from where I came from. They went right up to the edge of the roof. If there's ever a fire in the house, firefighters have to get up on that roof to ventilate it, and it wasn't safe for them to work on the roof. So they've made some provisions where they have to place them in a way that firefighters operating on the roof can safely do that. They've also required emergency shut-offs. Early on in the systems that had it, you would have to shut off the regular power from the grid, and then you'd have to go find the shut-off for the solar. If not, it would backfeed onto the system, and it could still electrocute the firefighters and other people working on it. The new system has a rapid emergency shut-off in it, so it's just a safety feature. And then the last thing they addressed in that new thing in the solar is battery storage is becoming more affordable. And like Tesla and some other companies have wall units that actually go in your house, and so the code addresses those. Those batteries are pretty dangerous. What it doesn't address in category 12, or chapter 12, is the solar farms. There's a standalone NFPA standard, 1855. It's about 60 pages that addresses that, and that's actually relatively new. But that came about, you know, as we've seen more and more of the solar farms, and now battery storage is really a priority. There was a pretty significant fire and accident that happened last year in Phoenix that significantly injured five or four firefighters. So that standard addresses that, and that's something we've been working with, the new solar farms, to make sure they're in compliance with. And one of the last things that I think affects Boulder City, I've heard a rumor that there's a lot of events in Boulder City. I just haven't got to see them yet, is crowd managers. And so on real large events, the code used to require if it's indoor event, 1,000 people or more, you'd have to have a crowd manager. Now that dropped to 500. We don't know that we have any buildings in the city where that's going to apply. But where it still will apply is in outdoor events over 1,000. We can require a crowd managers. And they're basically like you see at football stadiums and stuff that are in the different sections. If there's an emergency evacuation, a fire or something, they just help facilitate people to get them out. So there's a, it goes along with our parks process, now our events process, where we review their safety plan. It still fits in that, so it's not a big change. It's just a numbers change. Those are the real highlights. The 2015 and 18 codes really focused on high-rise buildings and mid-rise buildings, which are buildings over five stories and seven stories, and we don't have those. So a lot of that didn't apply to Boulder City. So do we have any questions before public comment, or?
Any questions? And again, this is a public hearing, so we will address any comments that council may have. But any questions right now regarding the information Chief has presented? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. Just for a little bit more clarity regarding that chapter 12, regarding the solar energy and the battery storage. You know, I do know that there are a number of people already in Boulder City who, you know, utilize solar power, and they do have the, you know, the battery packs there, you know, for the walls or whatever. Is this in any way going to affect or change them? Or is it more so just to point out and recognize that these things are more in use now?
Because the way the code works is as long as it's existing, it's not affected. If they were to go do a significant modification, there's a trigger, a percentage in the building department would know what that is. They would trigger where they would have to pull inspections. So it's only for new construction or alterations. If anything gets installed now, it wouldn't affect you that.
And is there any real major changes into what that would look like if anybody was considering looking at getting that, but, you know, was looking at it, you know, six months ago, and now they're looking at it? Is there anything major that's going to change some of those considerations?
From my understanding, the only three changes really were was the roof placement of the vents, the emergency shut-off, which that's been in place for a little while. So we had it when we put ours in. And where the batteries, just some considerations. Make sure they're permitted and they're put in the right place. Like I said, the lithium-ion batteries, lithium-ion doesn't go out with water. Typically, they burn out, or you have really special techniques to put them out. And so those considerations we made, probably can't place it in there, an exit door, things like that.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions before we proceed with the public hearing? All right, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing then. Anyone wishing to make comment during this period? The phone number is 702-589-9629. Again, this is a public hearing regarding the adoption of the 2018 International Fire Code. Anyone wishing to make comment during this public hearing? The phone number is 702-589-9629. Madam City Clerk, were there any comments submitted via email or voicemail for this?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, hearing no callers for this. We will go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for any additional questions or comments.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes, I would just like to thank the chief and also thank him for the patience he had on the question I kept asking over and over.
No problem.
I guess I would just like to point out, I appreciate you addressing the fact of when these codes are passed. They tend to be prospective rather than retroactive. So if there is any changes for things like sprinkler systems or whatever it is, it almost always applies to any new construction or if a dwelling or building sustains significant loss. And I don't know, Mr. City Manager, you may, there's some percentage, it's like 70% of the building has been damaged or something like that before these new codes apply to how it has to be rebuilt.
That's correct, Mayor, but I don't have the exact percentage.
Yeah, it's a significant percentage. I do know that. Any other questions or comments? All right, Chief, I appreciate that. Thank you for the presentation. And we now need to consider adoption of bill 1890. Anyone wishing to make a motion? Councilmember Bridges?
Yes.
Oh, excuse me. Yes, Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes, I'd like to move to approve bill 1890.
All right.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, sir. Move now to item number six, Railroad Museum Road, Resolution 7185 and 7186. And Mr. Lutrell has returned.
Chief, turn me off. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Keegan Lutrell for the record, Public Works Director. Uh, before you are items, Resolution 7185 and 7186 for the Railroad Museum Road, it's a mouthful, uh, design project. Uh, this is an RTC funded project. The first resolution is an agreement with the state for, um, construction authorization. At previous meetings, we, um, have determined that who owns what property between the state, the railroad, the city, um, but part of that agreement states that, um, anytime one entity wants to alter the property, they need to have an authorization for construction. So that is part A, um, and we're asking for your approval of that authorization. And part B is to hire LGA architecture to perform the design services for the roadway. That is, um, a contract for 200 and, where is it at? Just shy of $240,000. We would like to directly select LGA architecture because of their involvement with the state on doing the conceptual plan, um, which involves Linear Park, the railroad exhibits, the visitor center, uh, the miniature train area. We feel with their, um, their past experience that they would be able to seamlessly move from the conceptual plans into the design phase. Part of this project will tie in, uh, a minimum of two of the existing right of ways from the Boulder City Parkway. The first one is Mezcal. It's, uh, right next to, I'm trying to remember the building. It's the, the first opening when you're coming off of Buchanan. And then, uh, Mesquite Street is right by Dairy Queen, and the city owns another right of way through there. There's two other right of ways, um, to the west of there, but there's too much of a grade change between the parking areas and up to where the, the future street would be. So we're not sure if that's going to be feasible, but we're definitely going to look into trying to connect that. We feel that, uh, providing the roadway back there, it's initially going to provide better access for the businesses because there'll be access between the roadway and, and these businesses, and provide a little bit of extra parking. We know that it, this roadway is going to be kind of a tight squeeze between the miniature train area, the grade change between the, the buildings and the road. Um, it, it's going to be fairly tight, but we're going to try to provide as much parking as possible. And then long-term, it's going to provide access to the, the museum and visitor center. We're not sure when exactly that will happen, but, um, at least it will provide access to these businesses in the short term. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Hoskins, did you have any questions regarding this issue?
No, sir, thank you.
Councilmember Folda?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, so, um, as you know, I, I brought up that, um, part A, um, for the authorization, and, and I thank staff for going out and, and working with the state. The background on that is when the railroad, um, that used to operate through here, um, I believe it was Union Pacific, when they left, they turned the land over to the state and the, however Boulder City owns the, the, the right of way through there. And also, part of the property that will be used for this project is owned by, um, what will be a parking lot is owned by the city of Boulder City. So we did make an agreement to work together to, um, establish the state railroad museum. But now as we're going to actually dig in and start altering the land that, um, that this authorization agreement that we had that on, on the record. As far as part B, um, I, I do have some concerns, um, with using LGA just because they are primarily an art tech, architecture firm, and so they don't primarily, um, design roads. So all of their work will be, uh, more of the management of the project, um, where they will have the actual, um, they'll have subcontractors doing, um, the design and, and, and study that and surveys that need to be done. Where my concern comes in, it also is for these businesses, um, with the conceptual plan that they've made so far, um, this is a, I believe it's a, a 51-foot road that's planned. Um, is like, um, Mr. Lutrell said, that it's a very tight squeeze in some of those areas. So it would, it would be nice if this could come back to council in, in the design of this road, um, because I know that most of those businesses along that parkway have no, very, or no parking. And to, um, a lot of them use the, the dirt area behind, um, the paved areas to park in, and if that becomes a street, then that, you know, hits them on both sides. So, you know, they did a lot of, um, you know, they've put up with the Boulder City Parkway expansion for the last year and a half, and all that construction that's been in front of their businesses, and now we're going to do it right behind them. And so really, you know, if, if we move forward with, with using LGA and with, with going forward with the, the conceptual design that they have, I, I would wish that that would come back before council so that we could, um, speak to those concerns for our businesses and, and how that road will come in.
Yeah, uh, first thing that came to my mind is, uh, a workshop. Once we get into, usually we'll get plans from the engineer at 30, 60, 90, uh, a good time to look at that. The conceptual plans are usually 15, so when we get 30% plans, we can, we can provide a copy to you, and, uh, we could have a workshop at that point, or once we get to 60. You get any further than 60, it's, it makes it real tough on the engineer to start taking steps backwards. But at 30, that's a, that's a great time to get comments, and, um, if you guys want us to, we could do public participation, or at least do, um, invite all the businesses in to do a participation meeting on that, um, just to make sure everything, we want to keep everybody happy. We're doing this to provide better access, so it'd be a great thing to do. Welcome.
And I guess my concerns are along the same lines that Councilmember Folda had. Uh, and to get a better understanding of this, you know, the, the issues with the land have been worked out now, so everybody understands who owns something and who has a right to use something. So apparently that's all been resolved. Whose project is this? Is it the State Department of Museum, or is it Boulder City's project?
The museum visitor center is the, the railroad, the state's project. Uh, I believe it was shortly after I got here, uh, the city agreed to help chip in, um, to provide the design and the construction of the access road.
Okay, so the road is more of a city project on city land. In other words, we have the ability to make the majority of the decisions about that.
Correct.
In conjunction with what the State Department of Museum would like to do.
Correct.
Well, that being the case, uh, again, I think it's a very attractive design, uh, that the preliminary design that has been presented, but I, I also have the concern that Councilmember Folda expressed. These streets that go between Boulder City Parkway and the proposed road, uh, nobody knows they're there. Um, you know, it's been city property, it was always city property, but over the years, just as we saw with the businesses, when we got into the Parkway project, uh, some of those businesses had used, with permission, uh, the right of way, uh, that is adjacent to their business. And they wound up losing, uh, some of the areas that they have been using in the past. So that's my concern, is that these connector roads, uh, streets that are there, uh, the ownership is there, that's clear. Uh, again, if you go and look at them now, they certainly don't look like streets. They look like parking lots and, and whatnot. So I, I think we absolutely need to talk with the businesses. You know, if you go out there with a, a can of spray paint or whatever, mark off and say, here's what, here's where the new street's going to go, and, uh, let them know that that's what the plan is so that we can get feedback from them. The other concern I have, you know, that I expressed to you yesterday is about parking. Um, the intent of this road, the purpose of it being built, is to provide better access both to the museum, uh, and to the businesses along the Parkway there. Well, you know, it, I'm sure the businesses will appreciate people being able to drive back there, but if they can't stop and visit the business, it doesn't do a lot of good. So there's not a lot of room to work with. We understand that because of what the museum would like to do. You know, has there been consideration given to it being a one-way street?
I haven't personally thought of that, but it doesn't mean that it couldn't happen, because it could be a loop, come out on Mezcal or, um, Mesquite was the other one that I had mentioned.
Okay. Um, you know, again, I, I would like to see us make those considerations before we green light something, uh, because as you said, as we get into this and plans become more concrete, it gets, uh, very difficult to change what is being proposed.
Yep.
And, you know, we, we, the design of things, uh, I would also like to be able to revisit. I don't know how much, uh, how much work has been done, what the State Department of Museums is planning, or if they've even started that process yet.
I don't believe they've done anything other than the conceptual plans that were included in this packet.
Okay. Uh, because there, I've seen some other conceptual drawings and, and the layout, and I know the folks out there, you know, they worked very hard to make that operation a success. Uh, they have ideas that, you know, they've already been discussing for some time now. Uh, I really think it's time to have, uh, everybody come together and talk about this project before we do start getting, uh, too far into it and, and also see what is being expected of the city. If we're talking about the road only, well, that's what we're talking about tonight. If we're talking about contributions from the city for other things involved in the museum, again, we should get a lot of that established, uh, now rather than later.
Yeah. Yeah, to my knowledge, the only thing that we have stated that we'd provide for this is the access road.
All right.
And that's all we're authorized for in that part A.
Right. And that, again, that's what's on our agenda for this evening, and, and I agree. Uh, any other questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. And I had mentioned this during our briefing, but, you know, the conceptual plans that are provided, and I know you had commented on, they are, uh, rather illegible, and so it would be very helpful if, if we could reach out to them just so that we could get, uh, some more legible plans, just so that we could better understand, uh, what the conceptual design is exactly. It looks nice, but when you go to zoom in on the actual legend, uh, to see what it is that they're proposing and stuff like that, uh, you just can't even actually read it. So it would be nice if we could, um, get a, a more legible, uh, plan, just so we could, as we start to move, or at least think about moving forward, uh, that we can, you know, have some, in, more information regarding that.
Bridges?
Thank you. Um, is there an option to do that? It sounds like there's a lot of concern about this getting so far that there is no longer any control or a, a way to address concerns. You said the 30%, is that the mark at which?
That's typically the mark where you would, anything, anything further than 30%, you typically aren't making huge changes. It doesn't mean that we can't always, they could get all the way to 90, and we could tell them, nope, this isn't the direction we want to go. Typically, you just don't do that. That's where 30% is usually the, the stage. Um, I'm confident I can get my hands on the conceptual plans, and like I was saying, that's typically, they say 15%. So we could distribute that and, uh, get some feedback on that, make sure that's the direction we want to point them in, and then we could review it at 30 and...
And then meet with the members of the, not all the, you know, members of the community, but specifically the, the business owners and the people that this would impact.
Yep.
Along the way. Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Uh, yes, sir.
Councilmember Hoskins?
Uh, yes, um, I would just like to, uh, put my two cents in for something a little bit more historical that goes with the city, rather than something, you know, modern, which probably doesn't, uh, fit into our scheme of things, uh, if that's possible.
Is it po, well, let me ask this. Are we under any timelines right now? I mean, as far as I know, the State Museum Department has not yet funded this project. I mean, they've talked about it, there's been some level of authorizations provided, but my understanding is that they've not actually said yet that this project is a go?
I have the same understanding as you, and as far as, um, our portion of the project, the only time constraints I have is the agreements with RTC for funding, but I can always ask for extensions on that.
Okay. Well, I'm, uh, to be honest with you then, I'm thinking, you know, if we were to put into this resolution, say, um, you know, no further activity on the drawings for a period of 90 days until we have an opportunity to get input from the business owners, to have a conversation, or at least get additional information from LGA as far as whether they're at already? Is that, would that cause any type of problem? Mr. City Manager?
So what you're suggesting, Mayor, is that we would hold off on getting to the 30% phase until there's an opportunity to have a workshop with the business community and to get the updated, or the clarified plans for the railroad museum?
Correct. I, I'm concerned about giving the go-ahead tonight on this, when quite honestly, I don't feel we're ready to go ahead yet. You know, we, we don't have sufficient input from the business, uh, community, uh, as far as them understanding what's being discussed here. And quite honestly, the design, I think, needs, the conceptual plans that have already been presented, um, I think need, uh, some modifications.
Well, uh, certainly as it relates to the road, um, I guess that's part of the reason for moving forward the design phase, so that the consultant can create something that the businesses can react to. Right now, all we can provide is what is here. Um, I think to answer a lot of the questions that have been raised by the council, what's going to be helpful is having the consultants with their engineers get into the details of, of the lay of the land and what can and can't be built there, and then provide that input to the council, as well as get input from the business community, so they can visualize how this would look, and also to address some of the questions you've raised about the ability of one-way street, to provide more parking, to see if there's the ability to do further shifting, to improve the situation so it would benefit the local businesses.
To be, in order to be able to do a lot of that, we'd, I'd like them to be able to do the survey work and the geotechnical work, just to see what we're working with. And then that's when they could advance the conceptual plans, so we do have something to present.
Well, if we're in agreement then, that the plans that have been presented, that are part of the packet, are not the conceptual plans that we conceive, you know, then I'm okay with it. But if what is already a conceptual plan, if, if that is the plan that we're giving the okay for, then I'm not okay with it.
And to make sure I'm understanding you correctly, the conceptual plans to me are just more or less trying to show the overview of what we would like to, um, build out there. It doesn't mean that the road needs to be exactly where it's at, or, um, part of the linear park needs to be exactly where it's at. It's just showing the overview. Um, once they were able to do the surveying, the geotechnical, then they can start fine tuning, okay, we can actually fit this, this wide of a road with parallel parking or angled parking, that'll be able to, to tell. So conceptual is just a big picture view. It doesn't mean anything needs to be exactly where it's at, other, I'm sure the railroad would be mad if we tried moving their miniature railroad thing around.
And I'm sure of that. Uh, but... But, you know, conceptions and perceptions are, you know, tricky things, that if we go into something and somebody thinks, well, this is what's happening.
Yep.
And we say, no, no, that's not what's happening. So I'm just concerned that we already have some drawings, and I understand that's all they are at this point, is drawings, that are indicating, well, yes, that's what we want the end product to look like.
Okay.
So is that what we are not talking about tonight? Yeah, makes it harder, doesn't it?
It does, thanks. Yeah, it does, it's trying to show you the vision of what the end product would be, but the location of each item is, is not set in stone. That's once we start getting into the design, doing the geotechnical to see what soil we're dealing with. We might have to hog a whole bunch of material out of there just to be able to construct the roadway. We don't know until we take those first couple steps.
So in order to take those steps then, we, we need this to get that started then?
Yep, because that's included in their, in their contract.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Folda?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just, I agree with what's been said, though, and I think we're all kind of, everyone's nodding their head, so it looks like we're mostly in agreement that to, to move forward with this, with the understanding that the road size, parking, direction, one-way, you know, could change throughout that, and that we have those options, because we have several stakeholders that still need to be consulted throughout this, with our businesses, with the State Museum, obviously, we're not going to completely modify what they have without talking with them first, so, you know, if, but I do agree, there's a lot of challenges out there. Some of the buildings line up exactly with the road, and some of them are buried, their building is against the road and buried about five feet by it, so there's some challenges out there, so I think that they do need to go out and do some preliminary stuff so that we're not, we can really see what can and can't be done. So I, I think that we're all under agreement that, that road design can change from maybe a two-road to a one-way road, or have angle parking, based on feedback that we get from stakeholders.
Yeah, we can explore all those options, but like I was saying, we need to do the surveying and the geotechnical, just to even see what options will work.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Hoskins?
Oh, no, thank you.
All right. Anyone then wishing to make a motion on Resolution 7185, which is the agreement regarding the land use?
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 7185.
Second.
Your second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Resolution 7186 then is the agreement with LGA Architecture. Anyone wishing to make...
Mayor, I'll make that motion.
For approval of 7186?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Lutrell.
Thank you.
Hey, we'll move now to item number seven, matters pertaining to the Municipal Pool Ad-hoc Committee. Mr. Hall?
Evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Roger Hall, Parks and Recreation Director. Item number seven on the agenda tonight is matters pertaining to the Pool Ad-hoc Committee, and staff is requesting that City Council consider extending the term of the Pool Ad-hoc Committee by approving Resolution 7187. The Municipal Pool Ad-hoc Committee was established in September of 2019 to review alternatives for the repair, construction, and financing of the current pool or the replacement of the pool. And Resolution Number 6984 states, "The committee shall submit recommendations to the City Council no later than May 31 of 2020," and the committee dissolves after the November 2020 elections. Due to the COVID pandemic, the committee did not meet from March of 2020 to August of 2020. The duties of this committee outlined in Resolution 6984 have not been fulfilled, and the members at the October 2020 meeting voted unanimously to recommend to the City Council to extend the term of the committee to March 31 of 2021, and the Parks and Rec Department staff respectfully request the City Council to discuss the term extension of the Ad-hoc Committee and approve Resolution Number 7187.
Thank you. You know, I'll start out with this. Councilmember Adams and I are on that committee. Again, you know, the pandemic has obviously caused more than one problem for a lot of things, and one was, you know, what, what are the finances of the city going to look like? You know, so far, I mean, we just had our comprehensive annual report, at least through June of this year. Things have not been severely impacted yet, and we certainly aren't out of this yet. But in light of that, there were a few meetings then that were not held, and we need that time to extend this committee so that we can have those discussions and see if we want to go forward with ballot questions regarding financing on this. So any other questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. And I, I just wanted to add, to kind of remind everyone, that part of the reason the Ad-hoc Committee was created was to help create a more transparent process for the public, not just to, so that they could see that process, but also so that they could, you know, weigh in, provide input, and comment on that. And so, you know, hopefully, you know, should this pass, and the committee be allowed to, you know, finish up its work and start to get towards that, you know, we're getting towards that decision-making time where, where things are going to have to be recommended and make a decision that I would ask that people, you know, they review the meetings, they can watch them on our, on our city website, on our YouTube page, to, to please, you know, follow up on that, you know, reach out to the committee members with questions or comments, because it really is important, and a lot of the reason why we're doing it this way is to try and ensure that we can address the issues there at the, at the municipal pool that, that need to be looked at.
Thank you. Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes, I would just like to make a remark. I served on that committee prior to getting on the council, and I would like to say that there are a lot of dedicated individuals that work on that committee and put in a lot of time, and, and I have seen a very large growth in their accomplishments, so I recommend that we extend that time.
Thank you. And again, it is a nine-member committee, and the idea was to get people with different focus, different input on it. Any other questions or comments? All right, I will make the motion then for approval of Resolution Number 7187 to extend the term.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you.
All right, we move to item number eight, Resolution 7188, regarding distribution of CARES Act funding. Councilmember Folda, you had requested this item, if you wanted to give an introduction of your request.
Thank you, Mayor. So as, as previously stated in the packet, the city has received $1.5 million in Corona Aid relief, or the CARES Fund Act. Back into September, we approved recommendations for the funding and direction for those, and then October 27th, we met again for another resolution to direct where those CARES funds could go. Over the last few weeks, I've been meeting with different community members. So what's happened with distance education, sorry, so distance education in Boulder City, at the beginning of the pandemic, back in August, the city ran the Safe Key Program for two weeks, and after that time, staff found it wasn't viable to have enough employees or enough input or enough participation to continue that program, and so at that time it was dissolved. In the meantime, two different community members have opened up what was previously a daycare center to grow and create a distance learning program for students. The Lutheran Church, who runs Little Lambs, created a distance learning program. They housed about 40 children in elementary ages. They have, I think it's one to eight for staff, and they help their kids with getting on, they're all students of Clark County School District, they help them get on to school each day, they provide a place, safe place for them to be. Because of the space, though, for that amount of children, the Lutheran Church has been renting out from, renting space from the Bethany Baptist Church on Wyoming, where they have classrooms there and also a playground for the children to be able to use. Over the course of this time, they haven't turned anyone away, and so while they do charge, it's $25 a day for their program, there's a lot of families that can't afford to pay for this program, and so they've been helping with scholarships and other funds to help have the building for these kids that was a safe place to go while their parents are at work, where they would normally be at school at this time. The Christian Center has also expanded their daycare program, and they house, I think it's between, it's around 20 children for their distance learning program as well, and same, same setup there. So I've asked for this to be brought forth, because the other municipalities in this, in the valley, Henderson, Clark County, North Las Vegas, Las Vegas, Mesquite, have all been able to provide Safe Key Programs, Safe Key-like programs for their citizens, and we are the only jurisdiction that, this time, that does not have a full-time daycare center for distance learning. So I have asked that we could provide some funds for, for parents for the expense and the heartache that this has caused. I've also been in contact with the school counselor at Mitchell Elementary, who has also been referring people to these programs, where these children would be either left at home with an older sibling who's also trying to do school, or maybe even at home alone by themselves. And so I think this is a valuable program that's kept these kids safe for this time and gives them a little more support than they would, they would have being alone for their distance education and an attempt to continue education during the pandemic. So with that, that's kind of where this come about, where we could transfer some more monies through, to help with that kind of daycare or distance learning or childcare, providing for families that normally wouldn't have that kind of expense at this time.
Thank you, and I would just like to make a disclosure on this before discussing any of it. I do volunteer at the Senior Center and also have done work at Emergency Aid. I have no financial or pecuniary interest in either of those organizations. They are charitable nonprofits. I don't receive any compensation or reimbursement, and therefore believe that I can participate in this discussion. Anyone else wishing to make a disclosure or statement? Councilmember Bridges?
Oh, yes, I would like to make a disclosure. I am the grant coordinator and have been for the last six years of Emergency Aid, and in terms of, I have no other investment. I did receive money from two of the grantors, where administrative funds was offered, a small amount. It has nothing to do with this funding, it doesn't have to do with the organizations involved. I don't feel that this affects my decision-making. I also wanted to disclose that I did meet with, I'm wearing my emergency hat this morning, we tried to work away and help figure out a way to also assist one of those programs with ongoing funding that wouldn't be restricted to just the week or so we have left to deal with the CARES funds. So that's, I just wanted to admit that.
Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes, Mayor, I have to disclose that I helped the Senior Center on meals and bales, but it will not have an effect on my decision.
Thank you. Now that we have all those out of the way, any questions or comments regarding this item? And also, I would like to see if Finance Director Diane Pelletier is available to answer any questions on this? While we're waiting to see if Ms. Pelletier is available, I would just like to comment also, one, I want to thank Councilmember Folda for bringing this forward and getting this on our agenda so that we can discuss it. We have had the opportunity to discuss it a couple times in the past. Things move very quickly. We become aware of needs, and there are timelines on the use of these funds. The county has given us certain deadlines that need to be met. The federal government has established deadlines on when these funds can be used or must be used. One of the things that had been discussed is that we already know the amount of money that was distributed to Boulder City from Clark County for this portion of the CARES Act was given to us with the understanding that we would report back to the county on how the money was to be used or was going to be used. We already know that the city has incurred expenses for personnel, personal protective equipment, those types of things, in an amount that exceeds the 1.5 million. So there are things that this money can be used for, and we know that at least the expenses that have already been incurred by the city exceed the 1.5 million. So it gets down to a question of how do we divide it up? Mr. City Manager, if Ms. Pelletier is not available, is that your understanding of this as well?
That is correct, Mayor.
And Madam City Attorney, you've also had an opportunity to review the agreement with Clark County?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Questions or comments then from Councilmembers? Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, thank you for the updated resolution. I'm, I wanted to express some of the thoughts that have come, that have come up in reviewing this agenda item. First of all, we had $150,000 set aside in place for a Parks and Rec program, which did not come into fruition, apparently city-wide, county-wide. Initially, there was very low demand for programs, and all of a sudden, there is tremendous demand for programs. And that, that, that would be a source of funds. However, I, I think it's important to have a discussion of exactly what it is we're going to offer in a fair way. Like I said earlier, they did, the Little Lambs received enough money to cover the expenses that they need to cover and to go forward, according to, to the woman I spoke to. However, there is another program, and there is need in the community, and in fairness, to have one week to get information out to people as to what, what are they doing? I mean, there are people out there... I mean, there are people out there who have had to quit their jobs because one of them has to stay home to, uh, to provide supervision for distance learning. And um, I'm just, I'm not sure what this looks like from a perspective of clients applying, people applying for assistance for their particular need through Emergency Aid. Cause I'm, I'm assuming that the same level of um, accountability has to come through as in if Emergency Aid is paying rent or utilities. So that's my-
I may be able to help uh, with that a little bit. Um, because I have already spoken with board members of Emergency Aid. Um, this is not means testing, that, that's not what this program would be about. Um, they have acknowledged they would have the ability to act as the distribution agency for funds of this nature. So I, I, I think that that's up to Emergency Aid and the feedback that I've received from them indicates that they are able to do that and would be willing to do that. Um, so the timelines are very, very short on this. Uh, the, I think the time to be able to examine every detail has expired some time ago. Um, so what we're trying to do right now is at least provide assistance, uh, which is open to anyone. Uh, it's not being restricted in any way to any particular uh, program. Uh, but to be able to make it as available as we can with the limited time, which is roughly one week from today, uh, to be able to do something with this. So I don't know that uh, we would have the ability to dissect this and, and set up different things. And in my discussion with uh, personnel at Emergency Aid, uh, they've indicated they're willing to try and, and do their best on this. And I think at this point, that's all we can really hope for.
Is there an amount per person? Or I mean, it can range from people quitting their jobs to uh, twenty, paying twenty dollars a day uh, for, for the childcare programs.
Well, I, I think anyone applying for this assistance is going to need to document what their costs are. Um, and then it's going to be how Emergency Aid wishes to distribute that money. But uh, I'll leave it up to Councilmember Folda because this is her item and I think she may have some thoughts already on that.
Thank, yes, thank you, Mayor. The, the, with all, with, like the other um, distributions that this is done, this is all on a reimbursement basis. So everyone would, that is applying would be um, being reimbursed for um, funds that they give and they would have to show the documentation of the funds that they have already expended um, in these programs.
And I would just add to that, that Emergency Aid has a clear policy that they never make direct reimbursement to a person. Uh, but they are willing to consider contacting the vendor to determine if there is uh, either reimbursement or payment of funds that an individual may not have been able to pay for already. So it would not be direct uh, payment to any individual. It would be to where those services were obtained. That's the policy of Emergency Aid.
Correct, Mayor.
Mayor.
And a lot of the um, the families that have used these programs are receiving scholarship in some form, either partial pay or full pay. And so this would be a reimbursement, um, not to them because they haven't paid those monies, but to the institution that's trying to keep this program going with a loss every, every day, so.
Councilmember Hoskins?
Uh, yes, I would like to say that I totally support this. I think it's a fantastic idea and I know that Emergency Aid will know how to handle it. So I'm in full-blown gear with this one, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Uh, likewise, I, I think with the, you know, how fast this is all changing, that we are able to get this in front of us at this time. Uh, you know, it's, it's better, better late than never. Um, but it's, you know, these things that we are realizing as they, as they happen. And so uh, when we earlier, previously had discussed whether or not a, a permanent daycare uh, situation would work here versus allowing these other things, you know, we also didn't know whether or not uh, in, distance learning was going to be throughout the whole year or not. And so I think a lot of people are having to reassess um, what the needs of their family really are going to be moving forward this year. And, and you know, in any way that we can help to get, you know, some of this CARES Act funding out there to uh, those in our community that, that can need it. That's, I mean, that's why we're here. So uh, I absolutely think this is uh, the, the right action to take to try and, and get this into the, the hands so that people can, you know, get the, get the services that they need during this, this difficult time.
Thank you. And again, I, I would like to mention that, you know, in discussing things with uh, board members out there at Emergency Aid, um, there are a lot of people that are in need of assistance right now. Uh, this money was created by Congress, and I use that term created because it's federal money, and was distributed all over the United States for these purposes, to try and alleviate some of the impacts of this pandemic on the public, uh, not necessarily for uh, city governments or county governments, but directly to try and alleviate some of the impacts that uh, this pandemic has caused people. Uh, Emergency Aid provided me with some of their financial information. And so a, a friendly amendment that I intend to propose on this is also to provide money to Emergency Aid for the increased uh, amount of food and the cost of the food, because they've seen the cost go up, uh, in addition to the amount of food, uh, for an amount on that. Uh, but looking at their financial statement, uh, we had previously approved uh, some assistance for rent, mortgages and utilities. Uh, they are going through that money very quickly. Uh, moratoriums on evictions, uh, the state moratorium had already expired and people have been receiving eviction notices. And the federal restriction on evictions uh, is set to expire at the end of December. And that's the time also that the ability to spend this money will also end is on December thirty-first. So uh, you know, we are up against the timelines of requirements from Clark County, but we're also up against those hard federal guidelines uh, that are going to end these programs at the end of the year. So I don't believe we have an enormous amount of time to continue to discuss this. And again, I appreciate the foresight of Councilmember Folda for getting this uh, scheduled on to our agenda tonight so that we can at least make this attempt now. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, sir, thank you. Um, I noticed there was Emergency Aid needs additional amount not to exceed, um, what I would like, you mentioned the food. Uh, there were also computer costs, uh, technology costs that were incurred to make the application process for grant.
Mayor, if I may, the draft of the resolution before you today, uh, you know, in conversations with, but it's drafted so that the uh, additional amounts you approve can be used for uh, any costs related to COVID nineteen. So food, software, um, and, and so we broaden the language a little bit so that Emergency Aid had some flexibility as long as the, the costs were related.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. And again, that, that is an amendment that I had contemplated as well, that within the resolution portion of this, uh, to offer a change to that where we uh, talk about the different items that might be uh, paid for, but to include the wording, but not limited to, as long as they are the result of the COVID nineteen pandemic. So I appreciate you pointing that out. And again, I think that would then be up to Emergency Aid if they wish to submit something and can show that it was uh, an impact of that. Uh, I believe this resolution would allow for that expense to be considered. Any other questions? Councilmember Bridges?
I know, I, I've got lots of questions on this. Um, in terms of paying the funds for childcare, distance learning and childcare, uh, and paying it directly to the entities providing the service as opposed directly to the individual needing the service, um, would that be um, for money that they've owed? Would that be going through uh, December thirty-first, you know, whatever their cost is between now and then? Uh, I know a lot of the funds are not allowing for expenses going forward into January. So how would?
I, I think that, you know, we can't speak for Emergency Aid. Um, what we can do here tonight is we have the ability to determine how this money may be distributed, not has to be distributed. And we're not going to go to an agency, we don't have the ability to go to an agency and direct them in some fashion. So I think what we can do tonight is authorize this money. They can use whatever processes they may have or may determine. And if the money gets distributed, it gets distributed. If not, we know that the city expenses have already exceeded the 1.5 million. So the money's not going to go to waste, it's not going to sit somewhere. Uh, but we will be able to authorize this and hope that it gets as far into the community as, as we can make it go. Any other questions? Councilmember Hoskins?
Uh, no, there are no other questions. I'd like to make a motion.
Well, uh, if you don't mind, uh, because I think this is going to get a little complicated on the motion. Um, I would like to uh, see if Councilmember Folda would like to make the motion. And as I've indicated, I have a couple of amendments I would like to offer as well.
No, thank you.
Thank you for deferring.
Okay. So um, Mayor, I move to approve Resolution seventy-one eighty-eight, um, including the amendments made on the dais and um, adding the additional cost for, um, sorry, I'm not trying to, was there a, a cost put in area? I didn't see where that would be.
You mean the, for the amount?
Mm-hmm.
That is on-
That'd be the last whereas.
The last whereas, amount to, not to exceed blank. So the cost would, the amount would be placed there.
Okay. And so, and for the last whereas, to fill in the amount of eighty thousand dollars.
All right.
And just to clarify, uh, it's, there's already been appropriated eighty thousand to Emergency Aid in the previous resolution, so this would be an additional eighty thousand.
And that would be for the childcare?
The costs under this draft of the resolution would, would just be for any costs related to the COVID nineteen pandemic, including childcare, food, uh, computer, software.
I'll second the motion. Hang on. Um, I would like to offer a, an amendment to that as well, um, that this period of time for the expenses be extended through December thirty-first, uh, although I know the reporting needs to occur prior to that. And I guess that would amend or be added to, be therefore let it be resolved. We would need to include the date there? Or do we?
Uh, you could uh, include the date. Uh, at the end of the second to last sentence, I think, through December thirty-first.
All right. And I would also like to offer a uh, subsequent whereas, Emergency Aid has experienced significant increases in the cost and amount of food needed due to the impacts of the COVID nineteen pandemic. An additional amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars will be available to Emergency Aid of Boulder City for food. And that would then also need to be incorporated into the resolution portion of this, or to just put it into the resolution part of this.
The operative clause of the resolution already uh, incorporates the recitals, um, to the extent of the amount, uh, the amounts. So there wouldn't need to be a, an additional amendment to the operative clause, just the recital clause.
Okay. Then I would leave it at that, that's what I have read. So we are not only, uh, Councilmember Folda then is offering the uh, resolution be amended to add eighty thousand dollars as the amount for childcare. And my amendment that I'm offering is to add on to that an additional twenty thousand dollars for food to Emergency Aid.
Well, just to clarify, the um, the final whereas in the resolution does not limit the uh, what the cost may be used for. So uh, uh, I understand if uh, you might want to express that Emergency Aid does have a need uh, for additional monies for food. Um, but I, I would submit possibly um, just adding a whereas, uh, simply stating Emergency Aid's need for additional uh, financial assistance for food. And then for this final whereas before the operative clause, um, I'll just change the amount to a hundred thousand. I would submit that as a, as a alternative, but we can also do it the way, if you'd like to be more clear, that twenty thousand is for food.
I'm fine with that, Councilmember Folda?
That's agreeable as well. Um, I just uh, had one uh, for the amendment of the date. Uh, the second whereas has um, a date of December first. Would that need to be amended as well? I'm not sure that operational would work.
Yes, I mean, we can amend that. Uh, well, that, that's, that's the previous resolution, so that would not need to be amended.
Okay, then I would accept um, the amendment to add a whereas for a, an additional need for food and then put the amount to a hundred thousand dollars.
And then you need to second.
And I'll second.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion then? I know we've talked a lot here about forming this. All those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, Madam City Attorney, for your help in getting our thoughts together for us on that. And we will now move to item number nine, uh, discussion uh, for possible direction on the filling of an open police officer position. Chief Shea?
Good evening. Is this on? Yep. So uh, once again, I'm before you, we have a vacant police officer position that was vacated by a retiring officer. Uh, and I'm coming here to get uh, permission to move forward in filling that position. And I wanted to let you all know that the soonest we could fill a position would be the first week of December. And in the second week of January, we'll have another vacancy as we have another retirement, at least another one coming. So on top of that, as I've, I, I don't want to bore you with these same things over and over again, but it's very important to understand that in our line of work, we hire somebody, they're not doing the job. They're not doing the job for many months. So operationally, it's as though we have no one. So we'll be in a position here in January, we'll have three operational vacancies, plus I have two long-term disabilities. I don't know when they're coming back. So that gives me functionally five people gone before vacations, before sickness, before COVID. And a patrol squad for us is four. So that's a whole patrol squad gone. So it's very important that we fill these vacancies as soon as we possibly can as they occur. And there, there's no way for me to absolutely, for sure, know someone's leaving until the day they leave. It is not unusual in, in our business for people- It is not unusual in our business for people to say, yeah, I'm going, I'm going. And then two days before they go, change my mind and cancel the retirement. So I'm trying to plan ahead as much as possible. We're fortunate that we have a in-state lateral candidate who is processed and ready to go. In-state laterals are much easier on us. We can process them much quicker and get them out into the field much sooner because we don't have to change laws. So the officer you swore in tonight came from Honolulu PD. So, you know, we have to show them how to drive in a straight line for long distances and things like that.
They just keep going around and circles over there, chief.
So anyway, that's what I'm here for today, is to get permission to move ahead. We do have a candidate, a lateral candidate, and we have to establish a new lateral list. So to replace the person in January, the soonest I'll be able to hire somebody for the testing process will probably be April. So I know that we're going to have a long-term vacancy there, even if we have an in-state candidate off of our list that we're in the process of hiring. There are no academy options available for the immediate future. The academies have been very difficult. Most of them that have been running have had to stop because of COVID exposures and go to some distant learning. Well, that's very difficult in our job because so much stuff of what they do in the academy is hands-on. So then first academy option is probably going to pop up for us will be July. And of course, the academies are six months, followed by five months of field training. So if we hire somebody in July, they'll become operational about nine months later. So that's kind of where we are right now, and I'm trying to plan ahead and manage personnel as much as we can so we can keep the numbers of folks out there we need to have out there.
Thank you, chief. And I would say that, you know, I had brought this up back when the lockdown and all first started and as we were getting into the budget for this fiscal year. The concern was, you know, what was going to happen with our revenues? Did we need to take a look at personnel positions? You know, we've been fortunate that we've not gotten to that point. So at least as far as public safety goes, when there... You believe there may be an opening at this time because of our financial picture, which again has not been severely impaired yet, I would say that, you know, we can give you a go-ahead that, you know, with the understanding, just as you say, you may have a person change their mind two days ahead. If we see our financial picture deteriorate, if the pandemic, you know, becomes much worse and starts to impact the economy even more severely. But that would be my thought is, you know, we can go ahead and improve the hiring of those positions, let's say, over the next three-month period of time or four-month period of time, at least right now. And if things were to change substantially, we would be forced to take a look at it again. Any other questions or comments?
Well, that would be... That'd be a wonderful thing to do, that it helps us out a great deal when we're dealing with people, especially laterals, and telling them that, yes, we have the ability to bring people on. One thing I will let you know, because I'm always concerned about budget and money. I come from a very conservative background, working for a county. You're always broke. And so even doing all of these things, hiring the officer you just swore in, hiring a person December 1st, hiring another officer around April 1st, the salary savings for fiscal year '21 will be $208,000. Even if we do all those things, we'll be saving that much money over what was budgeted for this fiscal year. And that's over and above the frozen positions. So there is some wiggle room in there, and I agree with you. I try to be very careful when it comes to budget and I, you know, I don't... I'm not one of those people to say we need more people, we need more money, we'll get the job done, I believe in working within our resources. But I'm also realize that we aren't the only priority. So I'm usually very careful about those things, but it helps out a great deal knowing that we have the support to move ahead if we have to.
Well, and again, I think that, you know, the financial picture has not gotten to the point where the estimates were initially, you know. Initially, we were talking, yeah, we want to be careful when we talk about it. But again, we've not seen it occur yet. So any other thoughts? Councilmember Adams?
Just to clarify, this would be if we're talking about a 90-day kind of approval of allowing this, this would be for positions that are currently filled that were to be vacated and not for any new positions, correct?
That was the direction that we had provided before, was that it was for positions that were filled and became open as to whether we would fill them. And I... That's what this situation is, yes.
Yeah. We have... I have no plans to add any commissioned personnel positions to the police department for the foreseeable future. We are staffed where we need to be with the positions and the people we have. If we fill the vacancies as they occur, I feel that we can accomplish everything that we're tasked to accomplish and provide the... For the services that our community deserves, with the staffing and the numbers we have, they will stay constant for as far as I can see into the future right now.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Foldo?
Thank you. I agree with that sentiment that, you know, I think Chief Shea is... He stays within his budget, you know. Everything they have is expensive and he's aware of that and, you know, tries to stay within and be conservative with the funds and budgeting that they have. Police officers are unique in the hiring process where, like Chief says, you know, that once you hire someone, you still are training them. They're not on their own. They're not filling that position like a normal other job would be. And sometimes they don't even make it past that training, and so then you're starting all over again. And so for... I just think it's not really necessary for Chief to have to come back every other council meeting and asking for another... Fill another position that this could carry over. And I think it would actually save us money because this is a 24/7 job. So whether or not we have the position or not, he's got to pay someone to be there. So overtime gets really expensive really fast with this kind of position. So I think not having to have to come back for this position every other month when there's some changes going on in staffing, I think would be a valuable thing for us.
I really do appreciate it. And we have a little bit of volatility right now, one because of some of the atmosphere that's going on, it's impacted people, not by our residents here, but generally. And we do have some older folks now that have been weighing their options for retirement for the last couple of years, and they've all been here since the early 90s. So they're looking around now and figuring, well, maybe now it's time. And so I'm just trying to project where I think we're going to be. But I'm not trying to deal these fellows down sometimes, it's a little difficult. But I do think we're going to be probably losing two more before the end of this fiscal year by... It just appears that way to me. So we have to prepare for that.
Well, I suppose what we could do maybe is some type of rolling 120-day approval. In other words, you know, you have the green light 120 days ahead, and it would just continue that 120 days unless our financial picture changes radically. Is that... Would that be something that's... Would work for you, Mr. City Manager?
Well, just to clarify, Mayor, as I'm looking at the agenda item, discussion and possible staff directive regarding filling a vacant police officer position. Certainly, I'm happy to bring forward a subsequent agenda item that talks about the ongoing recruitment and hiring process, but I... And I'll look to the city attorney. The direction or action tonight is for filling of this position.
Well, you know, when I read the subject, it says for possible action discussion and possible staff directive regarding filling vacant police officer position.
Yeah, I don't... I think that... Is the question whether the council can give direction to the police chief to have a sort of...
Well, we had previously made a direction to staff that, again, as Councilmember Adams brought up, if there is a filled position, a position that was currently had an employee and that employee left, that council would need to approve the replacement of that person because of the potential losses we were looking at. I mean, I'm fine to say that. And, you know, at our first council meeting in January, Chief, would that have much of an impact on you or...
No, so that'd be fine. And I think I can assure you that we don't just fill positions, of course. First, we meet with the city manager and discuss it, and we go over the finance.
Oh, yeah, it's a process. I get that.
I wouldn't just go out and slide somebody in, believe me.
Well, and Mayor, too, just as part of the process, we have a committee of three people that evaluate each requested position. And so before it comes to the council, that committee has reviewed the need for replacing that position.
Yeah. And again, what I'm trying to get at is when we talk about public safety, because of all of that, the training time and all of that, you know, again, we've had months now to look at our financial situation. It has not deteriorated as far as what had been projected. So can we modify this with regard to public safety positions so that you don't need... You can still use your committee structure, but you would not have to bring them to council unless we change that policy.
I think that would fall out of the scope of this agenda item.
And that's fine. We can talk about specifically this position and then get something on our January meeting schedule then.
Mayor, was it a formal action by the council to bring these positions forward? I don't recall it being a resolution.
I believe it was part of the budget approval process, yes. And it may not have been a resolution, but it was direction to staff.
Mayor, how about let's do this? Since it's a little unclear, certainly take action on this position tonight, and we can reevaluate, clarify how the action was taken and direction by the council before, and we can come back to you with any necessary changes for council action to effectuate what you're wanting to accomplish to provide greater flexibility for law enforcement personnel.
I'm fine with that. Any questions or comments from council? Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I'm very glad to hear that because I think public safety is up there like number one. And if we can, at some point going forward, streamline that process, but in the meantime, fill that current position, it's very important. And I do appreciate your discussion on being conservative with respect to the finances of your department. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Mayor, I'm in total agreement.
Thank you. Well, I will move then to... For approval of filling this position, and we will discuss the policy at a future meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, chief. Okay, that brings us to item number 10, the city manager's report.
Nothing unusual to report, Mayor.
Any questions from council? Questions or comments on the city manager report? All right, we'll move to our last public comment period then. Public comment during this period may be on any item. There is a limit of five minutes per speaker, and as always, we request people be concise and civil in their remarks. The phone number to call is 702-589-9629.
Yes, I have public comment.
Go ahead.
Yes, good evening again, council. Fred Volz for the record. After many months of consciously ignoring the issue, it is potentially encouraging that the city finance director is finally willing to discuss the many reporting problems with utility capital projects. While one can talk in generalities about arcane GAAP, FASB, and GASB standards, the reports repeatedly presented to the public regarding substantial utility capital project spending haven't been updated in almost three months. Past versions reflect major inconsistencies and irregularities no one has fixed, nor have the external auditors discovered or addressed these issues, even after they were brought to their attention. Let's be very, very clear about what hasn't happened in the last 15 months. It is not about running special reports, but about ensuring the numbers are accurate, reconciled, and consistent from one city issued document to another. I look forward to meeting with the city finance director when she can schedule the time and discuss her proposals for fixing the glaring problems outlined in a two-page summary document. Thank you, and I would ask that these comments be added to the record.
Thank you. The phone line is available. Anyone wishing to speak in public comment? The phone number 702-589-9629. Our final public comment period. Madam City Clerk, were there any comments submitted for the final public comment period?
None, ma'am.
None, thank you. All right, hearing no others, we will close the final public comment period and move to our last item, city council reports. I think I started the other way. Mr. Adams, do you have any report?
Thank you. You know, I'll just, you know, for fear of sounding like a broken record, but I'll say it again, you know, as the pandemic continues and we have hospitalizations on the rise, deaths on the rise, and we have the holiday season coming up upon us, I would just stress to everyone that we be safe with our gatherings. You know, if you insist on having private gatherings, to do so in a safe, controlled manner, or, you know, lots of ventilation, distance, face masks. But really, you know, this is about, you know, not just about our own personal safety, but about the safety and health of the entire community. And so I think it really is important as we, you know, get into this, especially Thanksgiving being right here upon us, that we just really take into consideration everything that we hold close to us and what it might mean, you know. The chance that these things could get worse is highly likely at this time. So if we can just do the hard work now, do what it takes to stay safe, and then I think we can move on beyond this and then hopefully try and return to a more normal. So please be safe, enjoy the holidays the best you can, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Councilmember Hoskins?
Oh, yes. Due to the COVID, the Workforce Connection podcast was canceled. And just as Councilmember Adams said, I wish everyone a... And just as Councilmember Adams said, I wish everyone a happy and healthy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridges?
Thank you. Two things, both are going to be coming up on the agenda at some point. I had a, we had a meeting with the Southern Nevada Water Authority, and discussion will be coming forward on the MCCP, also the budget that we discussed at Southern Nevada Water Authority. Today, we had a meeting of the Southern Nevada Regional Planning Coalition. There will be an inter-local coming forward in terms of a name change and some other discussions that we've been having around that. And I also want to wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving and a, I'm having a lot of prayers going forward about a better 2021. So I figure I'd start now.
Thank you. Councilmember Foldo?
Thank you, Mayor. So with the approval tonight of the CARES, funny for distance learning and childcare, that leaves a very limited window, unfortunately. We did the best we can, but to get an application into emergency aid, they are open tomorrow from 9:00 to noon and then close for the rest of the week. So that gives you tomorrow and then Monday or Tuesday possibly a time for that timeframe too. So if you have childcare expenses that have been created because of COVID, please get over to emergency aid and fill out a form for that. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I know this is going to sound redundant with what's happening for Thanksgiving in regard to the pandemic, but I think redundancy is necessary here. When we look at the numbers that have been occurring, this wave surge, whatever you would like to call it, has now exceeded the two previous surges that we've seen as far as the number of cases and the hospitalizations. I've heard that the occupancy rate at Clark County hospitals is currently 82%. So that's moving up there, and the number of infections has been growing. We're seeing that across the country. And this is an economic issue because when this happens, restrictions have to go into place. And we can complain, we can do all we'd like about that. We are now over a quarter million Americans dead. We are over 2,000 Nevadans dead. We've had two more deaths here in Boulder City over the past couple of weeks. This pandemic is not over. There are good things on the horizon, but this is probably the Thanksgiving that you'll want to forget or maybe be able to remember next year is the worst Thanksgiving. But this is not the one to get together with family and friends for, unfortunately. So I would encourage people, you know, let's stick it out a little bit longer. We've had a lot of good news about vaccines coming. We've seen that some of the therapeutics are improving. We're seeing a little bit lesser percentage of people who are severely impacted by this. But even if you go into the hospital for a week, that's going to be a bill you probably don't want to have to handle later on. You know, America's been celebrating Thanksgiving for 400 years now. The holiday began as a way to celebrate in the face of very difficult circumstances by the pilgrims. The difficult circumstances we face this year will make in-person celebrations next year all that much more important. So again, please stay safe. We're getting through this. Let's hang in there for just a little bit longer. And once again, you can have a cold turkey sandwich and give your family a call or get on a Zoom call with them. We'll get through this, folks. Thank you, and we're adjourned.